She had received a
She had received a president scholarship for five thousand a year and away she went. Oh, and I went back to work the next day and my boss said, oh, I'm like, yeah, she decided not to go. He goes, how old is she? I'm like eighteen. He goes, what is she going to do? I'm like, she's out in school in December. Well, she worked out. I'm like, what? They had an open position in early Ed for until January. Somebody was having surgery. So she went to work.
My late husband's son went to Johnson and Wales.
To Johnson and Wales?
He loved it.
Yeah, she did too. Yep, she did it in three years.
Let me know when you're ready, Dad.
Okay, Jerson's not here and Jen's not here, right?
Here's Jen.
Okay, perfect. But that's okay. I could save this.
Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the Tuesday, October eighth, 2024 Southeastern Regional School Committee meeting. I called the meeting to order. Guests can follow votes using the link on Southeastern's school committee website or watch live on Southeastern's Facebook page. We are recording this meeting and let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's all stand for a moment of silence, please. You may be seated. All right, first up on the agenda is a report from our student representative, Adriana.
So I just wanted to start off by saying thank you. So the first month of school has been fairly quiet overall. It's always a bit of an adjustment. It's always a bit of an adjustment getting back into the routine and this year has been no exception for that. There haven't been any big events or surprises that have stood out, but there have been a few highlights worth mentioning. For one, sports have already started to pick up and they've started to pick up very fast. The football team, soccer, and cross country have also had their first meet and it's nice to see everybody starting to get into the competitive spirit here. I also wanted to thank Mr. Valente, the cross country coach, for providing the statement. Explaining how the season is going great, the boys seem undefeated, and the girls seem to be making great progress and making real strides at getting personal bests within most leagues. Another huge event was the college year. Many juniors and seniors took advantage of the opportunities to talk to representatives from different schools, union representatives, and active duty service members. There were representatives from all over the state and it felt like a huge step towards figuring out the plans for us. It was amazing getting to talk to people who either attended those schools or were in the service or are in those trades to see how, just to get an insight on how life would look like if we were to take that back. It can be overwhelming, but it's very helpful for those of us trying to narrow down our options as graduation comes closer. This year's homecoming theme was also just announced and many people are starting to plan their outfits, plan their nights, plan their rides. It's nice to have something to look forward to and I feel it's the first major event that will bring some energy into the school this year. With homecoming just around the corner, I have a feeling that school might not be as quiet for much longer. Lastly, the activities and clubs here was a great way to bring some life back into campus atmosphere. All the different clubs set up booths to showcase what they're about, whether you wanted to get into the anime club, whether you want to do track and field, whether you wanted to do the math club. There was something for everybody and anybody. It was nice to see a bunch of students checking them out and getting involved. So while it's been a relatively calm start to the year, these events have definitely been the highlights so far. I'm sure things will pick up much more and much more fast as we move forward, but for now, we're just easing into it.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Question for you. You said that the homecoming theme was announced, so what is it?
The homecoming theme, I believe, I haven't really looked into it, but I believe somebody had told me that it was like into the night. There's something around it, like a couple-ish.
Oh, nice. Yeah, good. Thank you. All right, next up is Audience and Communications.
So there are some thank yous for scholarships attached. And then, so I have a strange, weird view from my screen right now, so if I'm off a little bit. So now I'd like to take a few moments to introduce the newest member of our practical nurse program. Not just a member, but the new director. So as you know, right before the school year began, we had an unexpected vacancy in the position of program director for our post-secondary practical nurse program. And, you know, we were really, as we talked about with the committee previously, looking for a unicorn. Somebody with the right experience, who had previous teaching experience, as well as clinical experience, the right education level, and certainly the right attitude, personality, and culture to come in and really pick up the program and reassure our students who are feeling a little anxious. So I do think we have found that person and I would like to introduce Angela Passquanti.
Hi.
Thank you.
So Pat gave me a unicorn, which I thought was great. And I didn't know why at first. I'm like, thank you. I like unicorns. She explained why. So thank you. I'm really happy to be here. It's been, I mean, it's week two, so, you know, it's great so far. Pat's been great. Everyone is super nice. The students are settling in. Tonight was the first real night of the evening program. And I have a great mentor, Kathy, who's helping me organize some things. And yeah, so far, you know, so good. Knock on wood. Yeah, I'm happy to be here. It's great. Kind of like, it fell into my lap. Somebody really texted me and said, do you know anybody? And I said, not really, except me. It's like, at ten o'clock at night, I got the text and my husband says, who's that? And I said, oh, they're looking for someone. And I put my phone down. And then the next day, I said, oh, maybe I would like that. And I talked to my friends at work and they said, oh, yeah, you should go look at that. And so, you know, one of those things. So thank you. It's great. It's a really nice school.
And you jumped right in, like, without hesitation.
I know. It's going well.
Awesome. Glad to hear it.
I love the school. A couple of my kids went to Tri-County, so I really like the vocational school. It's great.
Awesome. Well, we're happy to have you.
We can tell we're happy to have you.
If somebody put the boot on their collar.
Let's see. Do I have a...
It just didn't say anything there.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so next up, we have, maybe if I have to follow this.
Anybody else got that message?
So, we have a presentation from Ally Belton about her trip to the Galapagos Islands, but our presentation did not open. Hang on just a minute, because I know that she worked on it and has it ready for you and now my Word docs will not open.
Oh, jeez. I don't think any of us can get into Word docs.
It's been an issue all...
It has been an issue.
Even last week.
Of course.
Or do you have a little message up top in the yellow box that says, please look back in?
Yeah, I have that.
No, I don't have it.
Oh, I didn't get that.
Your authentication.
Hang on just a moment. Temporary? Nope.
No, it's okay. I don't know why that hasn't happened to me yet.
I can email you her presentation. Yeah, I know, but I'm more concerned that I can't get into Word docs than the rest of the agenda. Well, I, you should.
Oh, now it's popping up, yeah.
Are you getting it?
Yeah, I'm getting it.
Yeah, mine's up. Just for the record, I always print three full agendas in case we need them. One for Christine, one for you, one for me.
No, it went back to the login, but I haven't gotten past the login tonight. It just spins and spins and spins.
Should we go out of order a little bit?
Ally's staying signed for just a minute, okay? I'm just trying to get the Word docs to back up so that I can get the chat. I sent you the email too.
Yeah, I'm in her presentation.
You're in her presentation?
I'm in the login.
It's right at, the link is on top of the... That's why I gotta go up a little bit.
I want to see if I can disconnect and see if Tony can connect.
Oh, you want mine?
Yeah, hang on just a minute. Let me see if I can disconnect from what I'm in.
I'll list up the presentation if you want, my whole computer.
I can tell you that the artwork on the presentation is simply beautiful.
I've gone on the presentation. I did not re-log in and then I just kept on getting in. Yeah, my one opened again, but the one that I was in...
Can Ally just share it with you on Google Slides?
Or you can just take mine. I can look at this one.
Yeah, although I can't. It's on the side. I can't even open the slide. So if you want, yeah, let me try. If this doesn't work, then Ally can share with me. Oh, you know what? I don't think it's going to work because you, yeah. All right. Ally, can you share your presentation in Google and I can open it for me?
Yes, I just shared it with you. It explains my day.
So you just log in?
Well, I can see all the next slides, but I can't see them immediately. So I can read them.
I was doing second other meetings today and it was fine all day, but last week we had an issue. Okay, all right. Just a minute. Let me pull the, let me get reconnected to the... There we go.
I'm Ally Belton. For those of you who don't know me, nice to meet you guys. I just want to start off with this presentation. You guys gave me this amazing opportunity this summer to go to the Galapagos Islands and do some professional development for my biology classes. I just want to say thank you so much. It was like a tick of a lifetime. Like, thank you so much. So you might be interested in why I picked the Galapagos. So I'm a biology teacher here. I've been teaching here for nine years. The Galapagos Islands, it's literally a living laboratory to study evolution, ecology. You all probably took biology at some point when you were in high school and you learned all about Charles Darwin, his theory of, you know, evolution, and that all started with the Galapagos Islands. So getting to take the same steps Darwin took on this island, getting to see some of the most biodiverse areas in the world. There's so many different organisms that live there and just being able to see them all firsthand was amazing. The ecosystems I found on these islands and being able to be there, it just offered real-world examples that I can bring back to my students, especially those who live in Ecuador that now live here. And just being able to bring the experiences I had back to my classroom when I teach about conservation sciences, ecology, and evolution. So some of the things I did on my trip that were really cool, one thing I got to go to the Charles Darwin Research Station, which is basically like, it's all outside. The whole islands, all the islands are a national park. So everywhere you go, whether you're waking up for breakfast or you're at, you know, like the Charles Darwin Research Center, everywhere you go, there's just all these organisms. When you're at the Charles Darwin Research Station, we got to look at some of the research that actual scientists are doing on the islands. Their big project right now is making breeding centers. So they have a lot of giant tortoises that are unfortunately, their population sizes are dwindling. There's some harm kind of going on in the islands with that. So the islands and the scientists there are coming up with conservation efforts to protect the endangered species. So they've been making breeding programs to help keep them safe so they can produce more of these giant tortoises. So eventually they can let them back into the wild and raise population sizes. So that relates to our curriculum because it's all important that we teach the students in our ecology classes about how we can preserve these ecosystems biodiversity and our conservation efforts to help keep all the ecosystems strong, not just in the Galapagos, but in our own backyards. Another thing we got to do, we got to snorkel in a different, a couple of different places. One was Las Cuitas and another was in Lobaria. And one was a saltwater, so it was like in the ocean. We got to literally snorkel with sea turtles and sharks and sea lions. And then in another area, we got to kind of snorkel in the river. And then after we did one, we did the river snorkeling one day and then we did the ocean snorkeling another day. And then at dinner that night, we compared and contrasted like the different ecosystems, how they're same, how they're different. It relates to our curriculum because one thing that we do in our classes is that we study the different types of ecosystems. We looked at predator-prey relationships. We look at the food chains and we look at from one area of the world to the other. So just being able to compare like different aquatic ecosystems is really cool too. See, these are some pictures of my trip. So that was me at the Charles Darwin Research Station. These are the giant tortoises that they actually like put in little captive breeding programs. These are the baby tortoises that they have. So they have, I think, like, I think they had around four hundred tortoises born last year. So they're really trying to increase population sizes. Just some projects some of the other scientists are doing. Picture of me, that's like the freshwater ecosystem that we got to snorkel in. The picture on the right is the ocean that we circled in. Picture of a sea turtle that I got to see. And then of course the Darwin finch, because I think it's important, you know, you learn all about the finches when you're in biology. So getting to see a finch in person was awesome. That was really cool. Other things we did, we hiked a volcano. When we hiked the volcano, we talked a lot about like natural disasters that could happen on the islands, like volcanic eruptions. I taught today in class all about limiting factors and what happens when there's issues in the environment and what environments kind of do to help fix the community once, you know, issues come to be. So just having these experiences, bringing real-life examples into any unit, but specifically the population ecology unit in our class. Besides getting to go to the Galapagos, I did spend a couple of days in mainland Ecuador. I spent a couple of nights in the Andes, in the Andes Mountains. So it was just really cool to be able to compare anatomy from organisms living on the island and organisms living in the mountains and seeing how maybe they evolved from a recent common ancestor and the similarities and differences between the body structures. So different things I can bring in my classes. These are more pictures, sea lions and blue-footed babies and flamingos. So it was beautiful. It was great. So how I'm going to implement this back into all the biology classes and not just my own. Myself and Katie Truchanardi, we came up with creating a second deeper learning option for honors in biology. So the second deeper learning option will concentrate on marine biology for interested students. So right now we have one deeper learning option for students in biology where they can earn honors credit in the course. It's four assignments throughout the course of the year that focus on whatever topics we're learning on in class. But now we're going to hopefully have a second deeper learning option next year for biology students where they still get the honors credit, but now in a concentration in marine biology. So the goal is just create this option for freshman biology students. It will align with the Massachusetts deeper learning frameworks. It'll highlight creativity, their passion, what they're interested in, but also give them more information about what we're learning in class for the honors option. So like I said, there's going to be four assignments assigned, one for each term. So typically like right now, our traditional honors biology deeper learning option is we'll do ones on ecology and it focuses on ecology. We do another one that focuses on cells, another one that focuses kind of on evolution and one that focuses on anatomy. So they'll still focus on those four topics in this marine biology deeper learning option, but now it'll just all revolve specifically around marine biology. So in our regular deeper learning option, some of the teachers, they do an ecosystem project where they have to learn more about ecosystems. So they'll do a similar project, but now it'll be specifically on marine ecosystems. They'll do one where they look at different cell types of different marine organisms versus those of freshwater organisms. So the cells are different between depending on what type of organism, depending on what type of ecosystem they live in. So marine organisms are going to have different cell types and different limitation of their cells than those freshwater organisms. So kind of using those cellular processes that we have to figure out how they, how different species have different types of cells. We'll do one on evolution and conservation, that'll be a case study, that will focus on our evolution unit. That'll again just bring more real world examples into our class. And then lastly, we're hoping to do a cloudogram project where they'll build an evolutionary tree of how marine organisms evolved throughout the years. So that will relate both evolution and anatomy because they'll have to compare the structures and functions of those different organisms to each other. So that's the plan. I started to begin working with some of the freshman biology teachers, so I'll be making all the assignments myself. But I do want to make sure to collaborate with all those teachers throughout the year. If they have any ideas, any input, just to make sure that, you know, they're teaching this class too. We want to make sure everyone has a say in those ideas. And then I just again want to say how thankful I am for this opportunity. When I was, when I was a kid, when I was in the first grade, I had a teacher who taught me all about conservation and the Galapagos penguins. And she made me really interested in science and that's what made me want to become a science teacher, one of those reasons. So I hope now that I got this opportunity, I can get some of my students to go into the career of science. I appreciate it, I love you so much.
Any questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Oh no. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna do the best we can.
Okay, so we're moving on to number four announcements, public announcements and conferences, conventions and meetings.
Do you have some announcements? First, I'm very excited.
Oh, thank you.
I'm very excited to announce that one of our students, Lily Rose Proctor of Norton, has been appointed to the first advisory council for the state attorney general. So that was a big, a big announcement this week, so we'll be putting out a press release about that. But I wanted to share that, that wonderful news with you, she's a legal and protective student from Norton. Secondly, I was very honored and pleased to be joined by Chair Gaze, Principal Guarini, the Director of Guidance Lois Miller and the Director of Special Education, Joanne Boucher on Saturday night, where Southeastern was recognized as one of five New England high schools who have really made strides in promoting student mental health and suicide prevention through the Child Cares and organization. And they have awarded us a new $4,000 grant to help us continue that work. So we're going to be meeting with them this week, tomorrow actually, to think about how we want to invest those funds. So that is great news. Two big announcements I had.
And then we have conferences, conventions.
We do have conferences, conventions and meetings. Yes, one of the things I wanted to mention is on the next school committee meeting, November 12th, I actually have to be in Atlanta for the Commission on Occupational Education Annual Meeting. So, but I should be able to Zoom if that is an appropriate option, if you guys are willing to, to do that. I talked to Dave Morehead, he said he can run things from here if, if that works for you, rather than have to reschedule the meeting.
What are the thoughts there? Does that sound like a plan or should we think about rescheduling?
The week before is Election Day.
Yeah. I'm, I'm fine with that if you want to Zoom in, but also Mark could step in too if you didn't have time.
He could, yeah, he could.
Correct? Which is always, unless Mark does.
I'll be, I'll.
Okay. All right, that's, that's perfect.
Perfect.
Big shoes to fill, but we got it.
She can tug, there'll be tugs.
We'll give you some, we'll give you some space there.
We got it.
Just give me, can I get the gallon?
You're asking the wrong person, Mark.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would just be mindful, since Ally's not here, when you all do the agenda, just adjust it accordingly.
Absolutely.
So Mark can just, I, I don't think you should do Zoom in when you're at that conference. No, I don't think so, but you know, I think Mark will do fine, but I would control the agenda.
Yep, absolutely, thank you. Moving on to CBI news articles.
The news articles are press releases, so you can look at those at your.
All right. Okay, then we're moving on to the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I know that you're going to do your donations report, but I would say, I seek unanimous consent to approve the consent agenda as presented. If there's no objection, we can move forward.
And as you mentioned, I do, I do want to make the acknowledgement for our donation for electrical program. Thank you to Stuart Paul who donated some electrical stock items to our program. We appreciate that. Okay, moving on to financial report and our treasurer's cash report with Karen.
You want me to email that to you? Mark has it emailed to you.
A deluge is up and running.
You can't see it?
Hang on, I'm trying to log in again.
I don't see it online.
It looks like it's a website issue as opposed to a technology issue.
Says it's attached and I don't see it.
Treasurer's report, I, I am in it. I must have the fancy.
Madam Treasurer, if you can see your report, do you mind, oh, it might be coming up, hang on.
Don't say anything.
Well, it's unfortunate because I actually have two months of treasurer's reports. July and August, July is relatively quiet month, but.
Here we go.
The report is there, people, yeah.
Thank you everybody for your patience, I appreciate it.
They always do.
So mean to want to do this by ourselves.
Yeah. Okay, we're getting there.
We're getting there, let's see if I can. Lost everybody. I don't think you logged in. How am I not logged in? Because you could be looking at the purple part of it.
No, she's in, she's in.
Oh, here we go, it just took a little while. So the, there we go, okay.
So the July report is attached and you'll see on the summary of the financial position, the cash balances, receipts and expenses through July 31st. It listed there with an ending balance in the general ledger of $13,039,533. On the next page, budget to actual, there was chapter 78 and some regional transportation aid received in July. And none of the assessments, of course, were due until September 1st. The gross pay summary report for the first three payrolls. There's a total of $2,097,000, you'll see the breakdown for salaries in hourly employees. On the cash reconciliation report, there's always large variances when there's an August 1st payday because I've done my transfers and sent files in July, but of course they get the GL the next day, so they look worse than they really are. You'll see, the only thing else to note there is the CDs that I had put out for 91 days earned interest as of July 2nd. And on the school launch certificate, it was $3,729.51 for the 91 days. And on the smaller one for the regional transportation, we earned $2,215 in investment income for that. For those I renewed and they renewed till October 2nd on a 91 day and they've since been renewed again. I renewed them again last week. The rate came down a little bit, but I think it's at 4.75 when they renewed last week. The next report would be the August report and the same summary financial position and with the cash balance of $15,317,000. On the cash flow, you'll see the receipts and expenses, payroll and non-payroll. Some of the communities had paid their assessments before August 31st, so you'll see those noted on the next page. And of course, the other three or four paid on September 1st, so those will be in the next report. There were six payrolls through August and the total was $3,783,000. First pay of '24 is up a bit over pay 5. And then again on the reconciliation, they have just the same sort of stuff, outstanding checks and month-end transfers that need to get done and math teachers that needed to be sent out, just the usual stuff. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Karen? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move on to September.
You accept the treasurer's cash report?
Second.
Right, any further discussion? If not, let's bring it to a vote, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion passes eight zero, thank you. Next up is Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Administration's report, Mark.
Good evening, so attached to find the appropriated budget and the revolving account budget, the report I give you to every, every each month. So as of right now, we're through the first quarter of the school year and we have just under 80% of our budgets still available. So we're definitely in good shape right now going forward. And then also our revolving accounts, we brought those balances over from last year. We've had some activity throughout the year this year. Those are all in good shape, two invoices we're going to collect still, so a couple of them are going to be small negative, but other than that, those are in good shape. And again, I'm wondering if there's any questions.
Any questions for Mark? Well, thank you very much. All right, moving on, we are to the payroll warrants. I'll entertain a motion, we could take that as a match for September 26th and September 12th of 2024.
I move for unanimous consent with respect to item 16 in D. If there's no objection, let's move forward.
Moving on to old business and our STEM building update.
Do you have any additional?
Steel is up, I don't know if anyone's been out there taking a walk, it's actually quite impressive, they're actually welding on it.
Andy loves steel.
Yeah, they're welding on it, the roof is up, the roof, I don't know if the roof has been back to do the, let's tip the flashing off and then that, you know, that way it gets out the rubber roofing when that gets going.
Yeah, no, not.
Not yet, okay. So other than that, I mean, we're out of the ground? We are not digging in the ground ever again?
No water, no water.
So everything's moving forward, they are still on schedule to finish in early January. So we didn't lose too much time, so that's pretty good, and they're making up time every day, so.
Is the live cam up?
The live cam is up, we just have to get the feed out to everybody. So we have a construction meeting. There's a firewall issue, but we have a construction meeting Thursday morning, we're hoping that we'll be able to resolve it and get that.
That's always fun to look at.
It is fun, yeah, it is fun.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
Did we resolve the eastern, the eastern letter?
The water bill?
Yes.
The water bill was.
We said thank you ma'am, may I have it on?
Any more questions for Andy? All right, thank you. Glad to see that there's progress being made for sure. Moving on.
Steel went bad.
Yes. Yeah, all right, next up is the 2024-2025 high school calendar.
So when we put together the AB calendar, the day-to-day calendar at the beginning of the year, let's bring it up. We had, we are hosting districts this year for Skills USA and we need a half day for that and we have not included that on February the 27th. So we have updated the calendar to reflect a half day on February 27th for Skills USA. There is no impact on time on learning or anything like that. But we did just want to bring it to your attention that the calendar has been updated.
Are the districts in person this year, like it used to be, so no more remote?
But it's just, it's just our students, so it's not like, I know, it was so much fun when we did it that way. But it's not all schools coming here to compete, which was one of the best events of the year that we would have here for everybody volunteering.
Can we get back to that, who dictates this? Who?
The Skills USA Massachusetts.
So the answer is no, we can't, all right.
But we are, we are working on trying to do something special for our students. We have a auto show, car show coming up on November the 2nd. You'll be seeing some information coming out about that that's being led by our Skills USA advisors to try and raise money for, for districts so that we can do some special things for kids.
The car show's going to be here?
Yes, it'll be here.
Wheel the time, we take it, it's going to happen with us.
Nope, it's actually one of our auto tech teachers who is also a Skills USA advisor is organizing it. So it's the first time we're doing it, so it, we'll see how it goes.
What's the date of that?
It's November 2nd.
It's Saturday.
Saturday, November 2nd from 12 to 4.
Open to general public?
Yeah.
It's going to be packed.
And, and we're gonna have.
People love them.
We're gonna have some food.
We used to do the wheels at high school years ago. Every Thursday, they used to be a lot of fun.
Extra police detail please?
So, I hope it's. So anyway, we're going to hope to raise some money there to.
Good, good.
So we can give the students a nice celebration at districts because it is, it's a big deal.
Fantastic. Moving on to new business and accountability data.
Oh, we have to, do we have to move, we don't have to move the new calendar? Robin had a question, I think.
Oh, Robin, did you have a question?
As far as skills, years ago, pre-COVID, we used to go, I, I know I used to go out to Skills in the States in, in April when we did judging. We haven't done that in years, is that still an option or?
They still do it at Blackstone every year.
They do it at Blackstone Valley.
They are?
Yeah.
Oh yeah. I volunteered the last few years and been part of the machine program.
Robin and I used to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can do, you can volunteer to be a judge at the Blackstone. It was out in Marver.
Okay.
Yeah, Blackstone, Blackstone Valley, I love it. I don't know, just the worst thing about the two of them has, you know, where directions is, follow the lines.
Follow the line, right.
Marver's not Blackstone, is it?
Blackstone is Mendon.
Because it was out in Marver, was at that Royal whatever competition.
Oh, that's where they, that's where the hotel is, correct? That's where they always stay out there for the.
But the actual competitions are at Blackstone Valley, have been for the last few years.
Some of them were at the hotel because I used to be at the hotel.
Yes.
We were at the hotel.
I, I made a note of that to talk to, to the skills advisor and see if there's something that.
Yeah, because it was fun, I loved going out there.
It's a great day, it really is.
I normally volunteer to the Boston Towing Machining Association, so we normally judge that part of the program.
So I'm excited about 8A. I cannot wait to tell the problem.
Me too. Me too.
Getting back on track.
Exactly.
I am thrilled to introduce our Vice Principal of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Katie Tuchinardi, and Noah Simon-Kawitz, who has taken over the role of Assessment Administrator. That's a new position that you helped me create this year with Katie's input and guidance, and he has really hit the ground running. So we're excited to welcome them here and to talk about our 2024 accountability data. So Katie.
We also have here Courtney Trinh and Jordan O'Brien, who are our humanities and STEM supervisors too. So if you have any questions relating directly to instruction in those areas, our whole team is ready to answer them for you. So tonight, it is a little bit of a long presentation, but there's lots of good things in here. So we'll review MCAS scores, access scores, AP scores. We will talk about our accountability rating review. You do have comparison sending districts within your packet. And then we'll talk about how we will move forward and capitalize on some really great gains we make this year. So first up is ELA MCAS scores. And just for reference, this was the class of 2026, who are now juniors who tested sophomore year, and they had to score a 470 to meet their competency determination. So as freshmen in grade nine, they had to score that in science. And now in grade 10, they had to score ELA and math. We had 65% of students meeting or exceeding expectations, and up to 10% of our students were exceeding expectations in ELA. And we did see a little bit of a dip in the 2023 school year, so it was excellent to see a lot of the support we put in place really work. And we are not far up for 2024, especially with a focus on exceeding expectations. We do have 13 students that have to retest, where I will tell you, I was thinking it was almost going to be about double that, depending on using the numbers from the year before to project what it may be with the new score. But we only have 13 who need to retest. And of the 13, three are English learners and nine are on IEPs. So we still have that focus on diverse learners for students who need to retest in these areas. We did also have 65 students in this testing class take the AP seminar exam as sophomores, and 92% of them scored a three or higher. So right now, Courtney Trinh and I, we're really looking at the correlation between the students who are meeting or exceeding expectations and those taking AP seminar, and using a lot of lessons that we're learning from that course and making sure that they end up in all of the other grade 10 English courses as well. Because that course has really strengthened students' research, reading, and writing skills. So next up, we have our science scores for the class of 2026. So for science, we're gonna look at a few different slides. This slide is our current juniors, the class of 2026. They tested in 2003. So this is the data...
It was in '23.
Oh, come on. 2003. So these students, they tested in grade nine, but DESI uses grade 10 data to build our accountability score. So this was years, two years ago testing, where we had 55% of students meeting or exceeding expectations. On our next slide, you will see class of 2027, and we've split it up between biology and physics. So our biology and our physics students are about half of the freshman class each. So we did have 30% who are meeting or exceeding expectations in biology and 23 students who do need to retest. Six are duly identified, which means they're English learners and special ed students, and 13 students are on IEPs. So we do have students that will need, that need to retest in bio, but we're also completing cohort appeals for them, hoping that they make their CD or their competency determination without having to retest. So while this is a higher number, and we'd like to see it be reduced, we have other avenues to help these students meet their CD. And because they test in grade nine, they have more opportunities to retest in grade 10, 11, and 12, and also for us to complete cohort appeals or portfolio appeals for them. We will see some schools that have their students test science in grade 10. We have always taken the stance that testing in grade nine is better for students because the majority of them pass and they can focus on ELA and math in grade 10. So that's where we are in our current sophomores for biology. The students who tested in physics in the class of 2027, 52% of them were meeting or exceeding expectations. 13% of those students need to retest, so it is a lower number than our students in biology. Three are duly identified students and nine are English learners. So again, it's really those, those diverse learners that we're needing to help kind of cross the threshold with MCAS testing. Our math scores, we have 51% of students meeting or exceeding expectations, which is up from 45% in 2023, which is up from only 33% in 2022. So you can see consistent, strong growth in our math scores. And we do have 22 students who need to retest. And again, six of them are English learners, five are duly identified, and 15 students with IEPs. So these students are in academic support or they're in ESL, they're in co-taught classes, both some with ESL teachers, some with special education teachers. So we're working on supporting them in their grade 11 classes. We also have retests this November. We have retest opportunities in March. And once the students have tested three times, we can file cohort appeals for them. So if they are students who are really strong in class and they're really not strong with testing, we can create a cohort appeal for them, appeal to DESI, and show them a series of their peers' scores and appeal for them to meet their CD through that mechanism also. So our access scores in 2024, we have 79 tested students, and we had 25 students exit the ESL program, which was relatively consistent with 2023. And we had more, more students exit in '23 and '24 than in '22. So they're making growth. And I did put some kind of longitudinal data so you can see for how our English learners and our former English learners perform in student growth. So we do really focus on the growth of students in our SGP because that is what we can control here. So K to 8, we don't have control of vertical alignment or what they're doing in their sending districts. So we really like to focus on growth. And in 2023, for the ELA SGP, our students had 50% SGP, which is about average for general, but the state average for Alzimels was 42, so we were above last year. But this year, our ELA SGP was 64%, which is on the very high end of average. And the state SGP for Alzimels was only 48%. So we're beating the state level there. And in math in 2023, 47, we had 47% SGP. And then the state was 40%, so we let them there. And then this year, our math SGP is 49% for Alzimels, and for the state was 46%. So we really are keeping up a little bit above where the state level is, and especially with the students who struggle. So we have been having more newcomer students into our building, and some of these students are not just translating, you know, math work from English to their primary language. They also, some of them are coming without foundational math skills. So they're taking the physics test in grade nine, and then they're taking very difficult math courses in grade nine and 10. So we've had to work hard to bolster foundational skills along with getting them at grade level.
All right, great. And so just one part of your packet includes the MCAS and accountability data from your second count, so you can kind of compare it to what we're doing here. Comparison isn't always apples to apples, obviously. For example, Westbridge Water has a junior, senior high school. A city like Brockton has a public high school, as well as charter schools. However, we hope that you can, like, this at least gives you a point of contrast that you can kind of use. And Ms. Tuchinardi is going to talk at the end of our presentation about our accountability scores. Get excited. All right, sorry. So stores are gonna be mailed to families this week, although verbal communication with families who didn't meet their competency determination has already begun. I personally made those calls unless it requires a translator. In that case, our awesome translation team has been part of that. And so these have been very fulfilling, these have been very, these have been great conversations with the students, very fruitful with the families, just trying to make sure that they are stakeholders in their child's education and they know what's important about this. And so I've met with all the students personally as well. I'm just trying to see, you know, one thing that we really emphasize is that we have after-school support. And we actually just started that today because they only have about a month before they need to retake the MCAS. And the turnout today was excellent. Actually, I would say about like 60% of the students showed up. There's another session that runs on Thursdays, and we're gonna be following up with those, with each of those students just to make sure that, you know, they have that after-school support. One thing too is that we've also followed up with their teachers that they currently have, so they're getting in-class support as well. So anything, it's like, you know, it takes a village. We're making sure that any teacher that can provide support to these students who aren't getting their competency determination are getting it. So even if it's after school or if it's during the school time, we want to make sure that they, they're getting there every inch counts. So on top of this, Ms. O'Brien and Ms. Trinh will be reading with each academic department go for the results of MCAS. There will also be cluster meetings that involve not only the academic side of the school, but vocational school as well, to see what we can do to improve, right? So this is, we use this data just to see if we can do anything with the district to make sure that here we're always, you know, increasing our standards for our students. And now that the data is publicly available, we're also reaching out to teachers to ensure that they are involved in the interpretation of that data. What they see on the ground is different than what we see from the results above. And for the students who are close on the MCAS, I think Ms. Tuchinardi's already gone through this, that we are gonna be working on cohort appeals as well. So moving on from MCAS to AP. So these are our AP scores from the past year. The reason that you don't see a comparison from 2023 to 2024 is that almost nothing changed. This is roughly the exact same slide. Couple percentage points here and there have changed. However, there's a couple additions. There's one, a new addition to this chart. We started offering African-American studies, and we did very well this, for the first time that we've ever offered the test. This year, we'll also be offering AP psychology. So we are increasing the number of AP classes that we are offering through the high school, which is excellent. This chart might not, one thing that's important to note about this chart is it doesn't show that how many students, it might not show that there are many students who are getting fours or fives, right? And what a four or a five does on the AP test is that that is transferable credit that students can use when they go to their university. And the other thing too is that hundreds of the students are changing challenging courses, which are really important to college acceptance process, right? So while the test itself is important, they're also getting a college-level curriculum when they are taking these high school classes. So everybody knows where this is in the school, right? You pass it on the way to the front office or more likely to boot and shovel. So this is our Hox Hall of Fame to cases, students who have done something extraordinary, right? But there's always been a big void on it for the seal of illiteracy. The seal of illiteracy is an award that is given to high school graduates who demonstrate proficiency in both English and at least one other language. Not only do these students need a minimum score on the MCAS, they also need to take an exam called the stamp test. Not the stand-up for you historians out there. The stamp test evaluates a student's reading, writing, listening, and speaking skills in a non-English language. The point is to illustrate that the student is indeed illiterate. Before this year, we have had one rather lonely name on there, that part of the board. So we ran the stamp test in Southeastern this past September for a small group of six students. Had a trial run. Three of them passed the first attempt and are going to be getting the seal this coming June when they graduate from Southeastern. And the languages included Spanish, Portuguese, and Italian. Now that this test was for a small group of students, imagine once we really advertise this test and make it really more available to all the students at this school. You know, note that English is not the first language of 25% of students at Southeastern, right? And so we're able to really push this illiteracy, the seal of illiteracy. This is something that's going to help them later on. The student is not, it's not just an award, right? But it's also something that is great as a transcript and a resume filter. How many places of employment are looking for illiterate candidates, right? That's becoming, it's something that's really in demand. And on top of this, many universities in Massachusetts also accept the seal as college credit and can replace a class requirement in a foreign language. In short, we're gonna be offering the stamp test at least one more time this year and probably multiple times next year as well. Now that we have a good, solid foundation, and we can go on, we know all the testing logistics, it's very easy for us to hit the go button and just do it a bunch more times. So moving on to, so I'm glad we've quadrupled the number of students on the board, so that's going to be fine. All right, so I mean, but not only that, we want to create a cycle of assessment at Southeastern that is robust and predictable, right? This year, we'll be offering past assessments, which is the PSATs, which we're offering this coming October, the Accuplacer for early college students, access testing for GELs and AP testing. But we will also continue to offer an opti-testing to evaluate our students, how they perform vocationally. We also plan on adding the SATs to our list of assessments as well. While many universities have become SAT optional, many colleges are going back to the traditional testing or acceptance. So offering SATs, a place that is familiar to our students will hopefully improve their scores. So bringing this all together, so you can take a look at that calendar and just kind of like what we're gonna be offering. And my goal as the testing person is to expand that, right? Whatever test that we can offer here that are going to benefit our students later on is obviously the goal. But these are some of the goals that we have for my role, at least this year. So we, the goals of the testing are pretty straightforward, but they have huge potential. We want to promote and celebrate achievements, both academic and vocational, and we do that through opti, the SATs and the AP tests. We also want to increase assessment support, not only for MCAS, but for tests like the SATs that may, that may make or break a student getting into the university of their dreams. Offering SAT prep classes, help that, right? Anything that we can offer in school or after school that's going to make a difference in those students' scores is ultimately going to help them do what, it ultimately can help increase those scores. And how can we support our AP students and teachers to students lock in that AP credit, right? We're always just trying to increase the bar, keep doing and advancing as much as we can. Part of this process is data management. Obviously, data is hard. We live in an age where there's way too much information, right? There's way too much data. How do we sift through it? So we've begun using a platform called Linkit, and Superintendent McLennan has been spearheading the chores towards putting our testing information in a house where we can collaborate and bring all this, all this testing data together. We also want to bring the, we also want to bring our educators the tools that they need to make those decisions in their classroom, right? Sometimes that's data, and sometimes, and using what we have at our disposal, we can collaborate all this data and put it together. And of course, tests are an overabundance of communication and collaboration, right? Just to run smoothly. One of my goals is to make sure that you don't realize that we're running testing in the background, right? So we want clean logistics, make sure that things run smoothly for the students so they have a good testing experience. And we want to make sure communication is fairly power enough, right? Making sure that students and parents know that, hey, we have all these great opportunities. Take advantage of them.
So just as a brief reminder about how our accountability is shaped. It is made up from 40% of MCAS achievement scores in ELA, math, and science. It's 20% of SGP in our ELA and math tests. It has high school completion indicators that create 20% of our accountability score. Progress towards obtaining English proficiency is 10% of our accountability score. An additional indicator, such as advanced coursework, which does include a lot of articulated classes along with AP annual enrollment and chronic absenteeism, create 10% of our accountability score. And just as a reminder, this encapsulates our whole building. So while we talk about maybe test-specific subjects, this is really a reflection of the work of teachers, administrators around all areas of this building to create a really exciting score. So on the left-hand side, we have a column for all students, and on the right-hand side, we have a column for our lowest performing students. The point system is if we had a zero, it would be a decline. If we had a one, it would mean that we remain the same in a certain area. Two is making progress but below the targets that DESI set for us. Three is meeting a target that DESI sets for us, and four is exceeding that target. So you can see in most of our areas, we are exceeding targets that DESI has set for us in terms of accountability. So we earned all the points we could in terms of achievement. We had threes for all students, which is meeting our targets in English, language arts, and mathematics growth. We had fours in all areas of high school completion. And we have a three in chronic absenteeism, which is meeting our target, and a four in advanced coursework. But I will say, the columns that I have really spent a lot of time kind of, there's, there's a whole bunch of other charts if you're interested. I can help you with that. But our lowest performing students, I don't remember if you think back to, or you might remember thinking back to this meeting last year where we had a lot of discussion about what our accountability looked like in 2024 when the lowest performing students were plugged back in. But I can tell you very honestly, I was nervous. I, you know, we, we do our best. We use evidence-based practices. We try to make sure our students have all the support they need. But we do have students that really struggle, no matter if they are duly identified or English learners or students with disabilities or just students who struggle in general. And to see this come back with so many places that we are meeting or exceeding targets for some of our most vulnerable students is really, really impressive and a testament to the amount of work our staff is putting in to make sure our students have what they need. So we are meeting or exceeding all targets for our lowest performing students, and that is 25% of our criteria and reference score in our whole accountability score, which averages to 93%. and reference score in our whole accountability score, which averages to 93%. So last year we were at 73%, and I remember we were a hair away from 75, thinking like, oh, we're meeting all of our targets. And this year, for it to be 93 and really have all of those points, especially for our lowest performing students, is something that is really incredible. It does also mean that our new targets will be sky-high. But I'm very concerned that we have really built a lot of foundational pieces that we can work off to keep scoring as high for our students. And not even just the scores, but it's, it's showing that the supports that we're putting in place, and our Superintendent McLennan really helped us in hiring and staffing and making sure we have what we need to meet the needs of our students. So to see, like, the data come back and have that validation is really, really special. So now that I'm done gushing, here is how we move forward as a district. So this year, we are still in the inclusive practices academy, and we did have an observer from the academy come in today, and it was excellent to walk around with her and see what she saw. And we are part of the equitable access grant. So with both of these initiatives, we're really focusing on growing our universal design for learning, how people understand and are utilizing that in their classroom, and just instructional strategies that are evidence-based, that serve all learners within our school. We are focusing on school-wide PD for this year, and also more personalized PD through instructional rounds and coaching through these two grants. We are focusing on diverse learner support, especially with the new staffing that we were able to bring in. I think it was four new special education teachers, two new ESL teachers, and really making sure all of our learners have what they need, both in the academic areas and the vocational areas. So to see special education, have two special education vocational teachers and one ESL vocational teacher, we're really doing some things that are progressive and very forward-thinking. I'm sorry, I think this one cut off. But it's high-quality instructional focus in math. Ms. O'Brien has just secured us in a cohort with another vocational school in which we have instructors and she and I that will sit through professional development and really focus in on how we support English learners in math. And that's a place where we can ask those questions. What happens when students don't have foundational math skills? How do we best meet their needs in this area? So it really was a wonderful thing that she was able to secure because our data is speaking to us and saying, this is where we need to focus. And it's also an extension of a lot of the HQIM work that's been happening in the math department for the last two years. We also will continue to promote literacy throughout the school. So Ms. Trin has just gotten all the Lexile scores for all students in the school, and she's giving that to both academic and vocational teachers. And she's really explaining with them, working with some other teachers, how their Lexiles reflect what they're able to do, and then also strategies that we can use to bolster reading support, no matter where you are in the school. So we're making this push to make sure literacy is important to everyone in our building because it's the foundation of all learning. We learn math through literacy, even though it's numbers. We speak it, we write about it. So we want to make sure our students are strong there. So these are really the four core places that we continue to push forward. Are there any questions?
I just want to say, you know, you acknowledge that it was a team effort and you give credit to your team. But I also want to give you some credit too, Katie, for your leadership, and I want to thank you for that.
I do have a quick question. Are we going to specifically target students with a bi-literate seal, or are we going to just kind of keep it open-ended and say, like, if you're interested in doing it? Or is there some other mechanism?
So absolutely. So I've actually met with the, our ESL department, just to see, because that's usually where we see a lot of students who are, who are bi-literate. So we're going to take that target first, but we will open it up to the rest of the school as well. So I think it's having those conversations just to make sure that we are, like you said, we want to maximize. Because sometimes you see something in an email, it gets lost, right? When you're having a conversation alone with a student and being like, this is for you, that's what we really want to do. Yeah, absolutely. I think that starts with the ESL department, and then we'll leave from there.
We will also next year have students who are ready for our first round ever of Spanish III. So we're hoping that that might be a target or a goal for many of the students that can enter Spanish III. And then also our world language teachers, we do have a lot of heritage speakers that will take world language too, so that will be another place. And then we do put it in the newsletter and then also on the emails of the students. But it really has spread a lot through word of mouth. So we've had students come up and say, like, where's Mr. S? Like, here he's giving this test in another language. And we've had a lot of students add it to the list.
People know each other, right? So they, they talk, and they're like, Katie, like, I took the test. And by the way, of those six students who took it, two students were one point away. And can we take it and try it again? So we were all stat, like, we were pretty close to like a 90% or something like that. So it's something that we really, it took, you know, we just had to turn on, turn on the switch and immediately, yeah, we have progress, so.
Do you have a question, Dr.?
I just want to say that it's impressive, from what I heard last year. And what you told us that you were going to, you put in that effort. So I think it's satisfying to see that the fruits of your labor. So we thank you.
When Holly had given us some of this information, one of the things that came, immediately came to my mind is that Southeastern is a winning strategy with all that is going on in education. And so we wanted to hear this today. So I just wanted to, you know.
I just want to ask a dangerous question.
Wait a minute, what are you saying?
I gave the compliment first.
Is this going to be a sandwich?
No, no, no. So, you know, I heard what you were saying about the SATs, and I've been in a lot of meetings in some of my civil rights stuff, and I can tell you, there are some very strong feelings about SATs being culturally insensitive. How are we going to kind of manage that with the population that we have at this school? When you're trying to do the tutoring and all that? Is that a fair question I just had to ask?
I think it's fair. I also, just, just so you know, this came from students. So it was the students requesting and saying, we're going and taking these tests sometimes. I think Principal Guardini's group, I'm sorry, I forget the next, well, the bigger picture. So we heard that when we met with them, that they wanted more support to feel ready for the test. So I do agree that there are a lot of questions, and there are a lot of places that the test may need some support, or help or change. But our students want to feel ready for it. Regardless of what that test looks like, we want to make sure that they're as competent as they can be walking into it.
So willing to acknowledge, though, that there are, there are bias exists in some of those questions?
Yeah. So by the way, I just hired somebody who's actually very skeptical about testing. The fact that it's something that isn't, it's a glove that we put on, and it's something that we kind of have to, you know. For us, it's about playing the game, right? It's one of those things that, for, and I, my last previous job at Southeastern was running our college high school. And a lot of what, you know, part of what I was doing was guidance, right? Which was, it's like, what are, what are schools looking at? And what's going to make the, make or break you going into this test? A lot of schools have remained test optional, right? And the best thing about the SATs is you don't have to report your scores, right? For a lot of those test optional schools, you don't have to do that, right? But what it does, though, is that, you know, for students who are able to get that, or are required to do that to get into a specific school, yeah.
No, but I, but I agree with you completely. It's that it's something that we, we just, the important thing is that we play the game well.
Right, right.
And like, so, even if it's not necessarily the best way to determine.
No, and I get it. I think that my thoughts are really around, to your point, the students really want to do it. I don't want them to be discouraged if their score is not what they expected it to be, especially when they're accomplishing so much in their high school education. Because it could be, you'd be like, oh gee, I mean, I passed this, but the SATs are, you know, that, that is the diamond, and it's telling me that I'm not as smart as I thought. Now, really, this is what kids think. Oh, sorry.
The PSATs, they also get a study guide, so they know where they sort of, and it gives them practice questions. So they're able to practice on the exact areas that they didn't do well. So it's prescribed for them. So every student, once you take their PSATs, you have, it's prescribed for you the things that you need to work on. So students know that and can take a look at that and can also study off of that, so.
They will feel good.
Yes, yes. And again, they get a lot of support here. They want to support each other. They want to have a support group to even study together. And so I think, you know, I'm trying to lean into what matters to them too and have support.
Thank you.
I do think your point is well taken, though, that maybe we can do more education around scoring and what that scoring means, and that they are a whole stu-, you know, this is one factor of what they are. And I think, thinking of maybe even MCAS too, before the scores are made public, just here's what that reading scale looks like, and when you get this at home, this is what it means. The score sheet does an okay job, but I think you're right, as a school community, we could do more of that. And then also, you know, but don't forget, you are all these other things other than.
I like that, you are all these other things. I like that.
Plenty of schools, even WPI, that's, I, I don't want to see these scores, right? I want our students to collaborate, work together. It's a student that we're looking for. So there's a lot of schools still that, you know, some are, you know, so we're obviously going back to it. But there are others, plenty of other schools too, that are saying, I want the whole child. I want to explore the whole student. And so even not sending them, you're, you're doing, you know, we found that our students do better sometimes when they don't, even if they've taken them.
Thank you. I'm celebrating you all. I just needed to ask their questions, because I don't want anybody getting them.
Good discussion. Good question.
I have a question. Some students will opt to take the ACTs versus the SATs because the tests are a little different. I think they're more, they go into other subjects rather than just the emphasis. And has that been an option?
Something that we can explore, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Oh, well, thank you so much. What an, what an incredible presentation. Really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Now we're moving on to the MASC resolutions. It's that time of the year.
Is it that?
Yes.
Okay. Put them up there. Madam Chair, are we sticking to when the person, am I one of them?
No, no.
Oh, thank God, okay. Well, are we sticking to whomever's going will make their decision? Or are we saying what we vote on tonight is the, what, they should vote the way at the will of the committee? Because I think the last time, we kind of went whoever shows up, whatever their decision is, their decision.
Well, I believe we, we appointed Jerson for this year.
You did whatever you wanted.
Yeah. I was, I was last year, and I think that, I think it's a good idea to see what the committee thinks. But obviously, there are changes that happen during the delegate assembly. And the, obviously, you have to press your delegate to make the right decision. But I think all we can do is offer our guidance about what we feel. But generally, it's the person who is the delegate who will make the final decision.
So my goal today is to have a discussion around each of these and just to, for Jerson to get a sense of where we stand. And be, you know, we trust that he'll make a, you know, he'll vote in a way that best reflects, you know, kind of what we think.
Dangerous question.
So Jerson, do you want to go through each?
Barbara, do you want to go through? You look like you got something in front of you that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, she printed them out.
I have them printed. Do you want, I will hand it over if you would like to.
Our legislative.
Legislative liaison, top of things.
I know, as always.
Well, I guess resolution wants is development of an alternative to high-stakes MCAS. I guess that's much more question two on the ballot as well.
Yeah, I'm going to be, it's a little different, but I'm going to talk about the MCAS in my report and all those fine things there.
That is a lot of whereas's. I mean, you tell us what you want to do.
You just go to therefore.
Yeah, absolutely. Go all the way down to therefore.
Therefore.
Right, so top of the sex column, yeah.
It urges Massachusetts to develop an alternative to the high-stakes MCAS tests.
Well, right now, it's still a thing, you know.
Well, it's going, it's going to be on the ballot.
Right, as a graduation, but as a graduation requirement, but it's still there.
It's not going away. It's going to retire.
Because they're sure, they're looking for an alternative that, so MCAS is what we use to measure.
No, no, yeah, but, right, but why doesn't it's alternative that even whatever they replace it with, I don't want it to be associated, associated with high school diploma.
I don't think they're going to, I think they're just looking to, an alternative to still measure what our performance is on.
But you still have to administer the MCAS test anyway, so you still have a measurement.
Yes, this is just advisory for the legislature.
So we, in order to receive federal education funding, the state, the state has to have a standardized assessment. So whether it's MCAS or something else.
What do you call, you can call it whatever you want.
So, right, the state could change it from MCAS to ACTs or whatever, you know.
Right. Still going to be the Massachusetts.
But do you all understand what I was just saying, though? What I'm saying, therefore, it may be further resolved that MASC urges Massachusetts to develop an alternative to the high-stake, MCA, MCAS, MCAS tests that is not associated with a high school diploma. The issuance of bicycle. I'm just wondering why it doesn't go further. Because the majority of people that I've spoken to, they don't care what they replace it with. They do never want it to be associated with, yeah, that's what I, I know.
Is that though because it has to go to the vote? Right, because I think it's, it would be a direct conflict with what's on the ballot.
That's right. It's going to be.
I don't know if they have the power to. If, no, if, if it added the language that Tony is suggesting, then that would be in direct conflict with what we're voting on on the ballot.
Right. The ballot says we'll keep the MCAS, but it's not going to be tied to graduation. There, I, I'm going to talk about it in my lectures here.
As stated here.
There are all kinds of issues, and people have different opinions.
All right, so we don't want to support this resolution.
As, as stated here, it'd be tied, as Tony was saying, as stated here, it'd be tied to, we'll just replace the MCAS.
No, it's just to come up with a new test. That's what the idea of the question is.
Right, but that new test can be connected with, in a high school diploma, it doesn't make.
No, it doesn't say it. It doesn't say.
But I wonder, Tony, I wonder if it's.
I mean, that point is it doesn't say it doesn't.
Right, but I wonder if it's going to come up at the, at the meeting, so.
I'm sure it will. And there'll be all kinds of issues.
Well, because the meeting's after the election, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should, then we'll have a better idea.
So we don't want to support this, is what you.
My, I'm not supporting this, but I, subject, not as written.
I go with my teacher. Jen says no, that's fine.
I have no comment on this one.
Yeah, Jen is awfully quiet. Take notes. So any further discussion on one? Yeah.
No, I just, did you want votes or just keep moving? General consensus?
Let's just, let's just keep moving, and then we can decide what we want to do.
What are we going to do with the, because I watched that on, that forum, because it was by Division III.
Oh, that, did you watch that?
Yeah, I watched it twice.
Twice?
All right. Basically, this is just replacing the MCAS. It has, they're not talking about graduation because it will be decided before the general, before the delegate assembly. So we will be in, whatever we do with this question will not conflict with what happened with the vote.
With the legislation. Just give us right there with the vote, all right?
Okay.
All right. The ballot question, excuse me.
So, resolution two.
I support.
To increase the. Sorry. I can't get login, yeah.
What else you got there, guys?
So it's to increase the compulsory age to 18 from 16.
Absolutely.
Who are you?
No.
Kid can drop out at 16.
16.
Whoever thought that was a good idea.
It was not a good idea.
So if 16, you drop out.
Right. So for this one, because it's a little easier, where do people stand? Are, is everybody in favor of increasing the compulsory age, or do we have a mix?
You want to vote?
Yes.
If you want to vote, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah.
So I'm.
I'm not in favor.
Okay.
Okay, that's two. Anybody else?
I don't know.
Jen's being awfully quiet.
I just always feel like there's special circumstances and, you know, I don't think that it's a commonly used thing.
Okay, I'll be your attorney. She doesn't want to be blocked in.
I don't want to get logged in. It's not silly, but there's.
No, I got you.
There's a student is, I can see a student is, so you can say, no, like.
Well, they, they did mention that during the.
What would be the team behind it, anyway?
Kids could literally walk out of schools right now.
Well, but right now, you need parent consent at 16, don't you?
If they do it before they're 18, if the law changes. What's, what's the penalty? What's the team?
Do you need parent consent to drop out at 16?
No.
I think you do at 16.
No, you do not.
No, no.
No, you can walk right out.
No, you can just drop out?
Yes. You walk out, no, you can just literally go to the front desk and sign out. At least in Boston, you can. We paid up for fact.
We require like a parent meeting, but after like, after 16, when you have like 15 days that you're not in attendance, you can't do a drop. And so some schools just do that. They just call 15 days. When you send a letter, you have 10 days to appeal the letter before you drop a student, so it's like 25 days. And then, but again, we always try to have a meeting within that time to say, you know, is this the best decision? And also make sure that they're landing. And also make sure that they're landing someplace else if they're not going to be here. Is it night school? Is it, what is that next step? Is it an update? So, the thing about eighteen that's helpful is that it's, it's very hard to file a CHIN. It's very hard to, um, to do anything about their attendance unless they're freshmen. Because they stop like letting you use the system and use the attendance officers and those kinds of things. And that's why I brought in saying that this is very hard to, small, small ways out, use attendance officers to be able to and probationally able to work with them and do a CHINs and stuff, so. But, yeah.
So I, I have a little question about that. So would this, would changing that to eighteen, would improve that? Like, does that you could try that?
It helps us to, to work with the, the courts, but for us, um, I think we have a really, um, high graduation rate and we don't really allow too many kids to leave.
Right, I just meant more in general, like, does this, would this really improve anything, I guess is my question? Or would it really just?
It would help in the, in the support of being able to, to get some more support for students rather than just the school itself. So outside support.
Intervention.
Intervention would be a little easier.
Yes.
That makes it work, but.
Yeah.
But I see your point for this, you know, different circumstances.
Sure.
And then when you get locked in at that, you know, I just think that they.
They don't have an alternative for it, so I.
They need to raise really the age that they are, that support the entire time that they're in high school. Not put a teenage limit on getting support from outside agencies to have students that are in non-attendance.
Right.
You know, so that's what they really need to lift. It's not change the age, but is, as long as they're in your building to get that support.
I do think that there's a wording issue here, increasing the compulsory attendance age from sixteen to eighteen or until the student achieves a high school diploma, obtains a high school diploma. Because I graduated seventeen, I'd have been pretty mad if I had to stay in school.
I did too.
Oh, that's right. I graduated at seventeen too. That would have been a little problem.
So that's.
So, but I'm, yeah, but I'm sure that the spirit of it is to keep kids in school until they graduate.
But most kids don't graduate. Would you say, what would you say the grad, the ages of most of them?
Probably the nice one's going to graduate before he turns eighteen.
A lot of them. But wouldn't that, wouldn't that meet the requirements anyways? Like if you graduated at seventeen, doesn't that fulfill the requirement?
We could file amendment.
The lawyer, right?
All three attendances.
I just, I mean.
Is it just drop out? It can't drop out.
I mean, I guess if you drop out at sixteen, maybe you should, it should be one of the, you get.
Not the graduation, just the, you drop out.
So let's move on to number three.
Jerson, you got the marching order. You good on this?
Okay, all right. So, uh, in support, yes.
All right, firearms.
So number three.
Safe storage of firearms sponsored by the Framingham School Committee.
All right, can you, can you read the resolution?
Yeah, would you read this?
No, just at the top. Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Uh, recommends all districts directors, superintendent and staff to create an appropriate communication to parents and guardians that explains importance of secure firearm storage to protect children and teens from unauthorized access to unsecure firearms. The illegal obligations consistent with Massachusetts safe storage law. Also urges other, other communities to work with their local enforcement agencies, some health agencies and nonprofit organizations to collaborate and increase efforts to inform district parents and guardians of their obligations regarding the secure storage of firearms in their homes and vehicles.
Well.
This is such a fun.
Let's talk liability here right now.
Yeah, you might come and tell me.
Yes.
Yeah, you need to talk liability.
I can't believe this isn't even.
Clearly it's, it's important to every member of our community that firearms are stored safely and out of reach of underage people.
Right.
But I fail to understand how it is the responsibility of the superintendent of a school district to inform parents or to inform people.
Right.
That seems like a liability.
That's way outside.
Yeah, extreme overreach.
And that's way outside what our responsibility and our, and our appointed role is as educators. I mean, within our health curriculum, within other things, we can talk about this with students, but to be required to communicate with parents and guardians about secure firearm storage is.
And the variation, the variance that could happen, like what, what makes it appropriate communication?
You know, if it's, if it's said to distribute information that is developed by experts, right? But what if I draft something and it's, it wasn't sufficient? It didn't come along the bases.
This is, it has a lot of legal ramifications.
So, those are my two cents.
Speaking as a legal firearm owner, I can carry in thirty-nine states in this country. That is just awful. That is not your responsibility. That is the responsibility of the licensed firearm owner.
Yeah.
And, and the testing that you go through to get that license to carry a firearm. That is their responsibility that you sign on.
And now there's increased education and requirements to ca, to carry in Massachusetts too, by law, right?
The laws are just getting more and more stacked up.
Massachusetts is very hard.
Getting more and more difficult now fly by a state.
Can we get, can we get a warm and fuzzy one? Like, I'm just waiting for a good one, you know?
Although we do know that a parent is going to jail for not keeping the.
But whose responsibility is it?
Oh, it's not, it's not the fault of the school. It's the fault of the parent.
Right.
Yeah.
And where are they going to get educate? Well, who, who's going to educate parents? Not us, but.
Well, to get a license to carry, you have to take a course in Massachusetts. You can't just apply.
In Massachusetts, but what if you live in another state?
We're not worried about that.
But we don't care.
Constitutional carry or anything else.
We already have that. Good.
School bus stop arms surveillance act and enforcement penalties.
I could have to go. I, I could support that.
This one I believe is to install cameras, live digital video detection monitoring systems for the purposes of enforcing violations against the owner of a motor vehicle whose vehicle failed to stop a school bus when required to do so by law.
Yes.
And it would.
Massachusetts tried that with the stoplight cameras. It's constitutionally not legal. It'll never pass.
All right, so next one.
How many more do we have here?
This would be a different category because it has to do with children.
Massachusetts is pretty well blanketed. It doesn't matter. It's, it'll be a constitutional idea.
Did we go over this? I mentioned this before.
They tried something, it was a different urge in the last years.
I mean, I wish we could because.
There actually some.
I'm saying it's not a good idea. I'm going to say, you know, the constitution will prevent it.
Okay, what's number five?
Five.
So, so, Jerson. As I understand it now, just, as I understand it now, if somebody like runs the stoplight for this, on the school bus.
Right.
The school bus driver is supposed.
That's right. Makes sense.
Exactly.
Which means that.
Unless a police officer sees it personally.
Sees it, right.
And this way it allows to be just by the camera.
Same thing with the stoplight. They wanted to send you tickets in the mail if you sped. Like if you went too fast between toll booths, they could record that. They said, no, you cannot do that.
Couldn't we vote for the monitoring system even if the ticket is not like going to hold up? Couldn't we vote for it so then if there is an accident, we have the information based on the buses?
Sounds like a dashboard camera.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, you could have a camera.
Especially when we're another.
Question mark.
There are actually buses now that are, this is what I heard, that have arms that go all the way across the other lane.
All right, number five. Aligning taxing authority with the required local contribution.
What is this?
What is this?
Uh, that Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls for the enactment of legislation that will increase municipalities levy, limit for the amount of in, for the amount of increase required local contribution excessive.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought that said.
Grab the municipality ability to raise local revenues mandated by.
They're just trying to get around property.
That's exactly what they're trying to do.
They're trying to, it's one of the seventies problems.
I thought it might have been a different one, but, so are we, do we have a general consensus for this one as a no?
And I know that's probably sounding crazy to folks that are listening to us, but we don't have the, I, this is a local issue. So we basically will be overriding the local property taxes. That's what this is going to do.
Yeah.
I don't want to put us in that.
The idea of the, the idea of the resolution, the thing we just put before the legislature, that, it doesn't have any, it's not.
It doesn't have any teeth.
I know it doesn't have any teeth, but it's also giving the message, that's our philosophy, that in Commonwealth of Massachusetts legislature should be overruling these cities and towns. And my position is no.
Which is.
Well, the thing is that there are people, because there were so many overrides this year because there were so.
But they have to be voted by the voters.
So many, can I finish?
Yeah.
So many towns were held harmless this year and they got a very, very low increase in their state aid. And what they're saying is that, you know, the figure of two and a half was very arbitrary. And so is it something, is it time to look, and I'm not saying from advocating for or against it, but is it time to look at maybe the number is not right? That's all I'm saying.
Without taking the right, away from the voters that vote on pro, two and a half.
But the legislature can override that any day of the week.
They wouldn't be legislated.
I'm, I'm sticking with the voters.
All right, but number six?
No, what do we, what do, what's that message to Jerson? We've had a lengthy conversation here.
So five was don't support.
Well, you know, I don't envy you, Jerson.
On this one, that's why I don't envy you.
Oh, there's two of the six. How many are there?
Ten.
So a lot of this feels like it's out of our.
Yes.
It's only giving advice to the legislature. That's all we're doing.
Yeah, they're not ironclad things here and you'll hear, when you go to the resolutions meeting, there's people yelling.
Oh, my God.
Okay, so six had to do with rural district, districts, correct?
All right, let me see what's going with rural districts. Because they, they are not getting what they need. That is true.
They're in terrible shape.
Yes, that is true.
This one urges a legislator to pass comprehensive legislation encompassing all, huh? Oh, did I miss something?
No, you're right.
Encompassing all recommendations from the legislative commission on the fiscal health of rural schools report. Sustainable future for the rural schools, but.
What's wrong with that? I don't follow that.
Give me a lot of.
How many rural schools do we have in this state?
Oh, probably a lot.
Western Mass. A lot, western, western.
So that's right.
I don't follow that.
Right, exactly, exactly.
In New York.
Oh, wow.
I feel like this will be a yes.
We might have a yes. Okay, number seven, fully adjusting chapter seventy-eight for inflation.
That's there. Yes, it calls the Massachusetts Legislature to advance legislation mandating inflation index catch-ups to chapter seventy foundation eight that fully accounts for the realization of the realized inflation that has, that has occurred since the passage of the student opportunity.
Yes.
Okay, that was easy.
That's an easy one. Yes.
Yes. Are, are we pretty much in agreement with the yes for that one?
Is that going to add more taxes to the town or is that coming from the state?
That's coming from the state.
That's state aid.
That state, that comes from.
Well, but the money comes from somewhere.
So if it increases your foundation budget, it increases.
Right.
Okay. All right.
How's that going to be received in the towns? What do you, what's the consensus of that?
Oh, they'll be happy because a lot of towns barely could keep, they, there were a lot of overrides this year. Next year it's going to be worse.
How many more students do we want to take from the town?
We do not take students from the town. Students apply with their.
She's hauling the legal stuff tonight.
Language matter.
Yes. All right, number eight is equitable funding for non-regional school districts with high transportation costs.
So, this is sponsored by the Plymouth School Committee. Just to give you some background, the Plymouth, Plymouth is the largest by area town in Massachusetts and, and larger than our entire regional school district. So I do understand why they have concerns about transportation in the same way that we do. So that's just the background, but.
The state hasn't funded us fully. I mean, they're never going to fund that.
No, not yet.
The therefore is very long.
You guys will have to read that. That therefore continues for a page or two.
So it's saying, well, what, it's saying, um, that they should have access to financial support similarly to regional districts when costs are extraordinary and to have a special fund established to provide financial assistance.
Also, I think they want, also create a circuit breaker.
Yeah. And then a review.
They were very thorough.
Yeah. I could get by in that.
I could support this.
Yeah, I can, yeah. And if there are other.
I think they should add regional schools into that as well and really look at them.
We are, we have a transportation.
Absolute period. I mean, that's.
Okay. Ooh, we got, there's one for resolution nine from Tri County. So MSBA grants evaluation for chapter seventy-four.
So this one, the resolve that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the governor and the legislative to support the expansion of capacity at the current chapter seventy-four schools and to work with districts that lack access to vocational technical schools, create programs.
Oh, I guess that one's ten, right?
No, it's not.
Is it nine? Oh, I see. Yes, thank you.
We're on ten, right?
We're on nine.
Oh, no, oh, are you, oh.
Yes, I could support this.
Oh, no, did I read ten? I'm sorry.
You read ten.
You read ten.
You read ten.
All right, talk to me about nine again.
This line is, calls upon Massachusetts Association and MSBA to create an evaluation.
Oh, really?
To create a system, simply assess the cost of elementary, comprehensive high schools and vocational, technical and high cultural schools resulting in true costs.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, I think.
Mark, can I be done? I'm asking, no, I know, I'm, no, seriously, it does, it doesn't make sense for, for our numbers, for anyone's numbers, right?
It would make sense for us because obviously the cost in vocational school is more than.
Yeah, yeah.
Building, building little industries.
Even a high school versus an elementary is a big difference.
Yeah. Okay.
There's seems so much common sense on that one.
Oh, yeah, thank goodness. We had a common sense one.
Yeah.
All right, so we're at number ten now.
All right.
Look at number ten again. This one said that the, um, it would, it would resolve that the Massachusetts Association of School Committee, School Committees call upon the governor and legislative to support the expansion of capacity at the current chapter seventy-four schools and to work with districts that lack access to vocational, technical schools to create programs and, I don't know where the end continues. That the Association of School Committees calls upon Massachusetts to convene a special commission to consider changes to the current law and regulate, regulation relating to the overall authority of Massachusetts school building authority, alternative, alternative overall financing structures, standards for project eligibility, appropriate financial assistance based on the nature of the school and the, and the projects being considered potential, differential requirements for elementary, middle school, comprehensive high schools, vocational, technical, high cultural schools and other such matters as affects vocational, technical.
They need the words.
Who signed, who sponsored?
Yeah.
Tri County.
Tri County.
They pretend to.
Yeah, but it's also, you know, I would tell you, it's also the, it's also the position of.
They're building a brand new school with no more seats.
It is?
So why do they want to?
But that'd be actually wordsmith.
There are towns that.
Basically they want MSBA to fund more vocational.
That, yes.
There are towns that have no access to vocational.
Well, then they've even, Tri County sponsored this and they're building a brand new school with no more seats added.
Well, that's what they're upset about.
And they could, they could have picked the school as bigger.
No, MSBA was only going to give them a thousand seats.
No, it's just like Brockton High School. If they were technically, if they were to build a new one, you could not get one the same size.
Like South Shore got the vote on and they chose nine hundred up from seven hundred and something. So they, they're expanding access, but the vote, they chose the.
There's a formula and that was what they were told because Tri County was very upset that it was a thousand students.
Okay, so what is our position on this?
I will, yes.
Okay. Are we going to, yes? Okay.
Yes. Is it yes?
Yes. So Jerson, I mean, clearly there's some gray areas, but I think you have a sense of what people are feeling, so.
You guys have my number.
Yeah.
Face time me when you're voting.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
We can keep that, obviously.
We don't have any...
Next up is the Chair's Report. I'll be very quick. So depending on when we end today, I am hoping that we continue until eight-thirty with Holly's evaluation to finish that up, just a couple of things to tie up, if that works for folks. At our second monthly school committee meeting, I am hoping to do people and culture and policy subs. Policy would just be a continuation of policy review that was started last year. There may be a possibility that we'll add a personnel sub as well, but that's still kind of TBD. And then on the twenty, so this is for October twenty-second. More information to come. October twenty-ninth, I believe, is our advisory dinner.
That's correct.
So please mark your calendars at six o'clock. Hope everybody can make that. And then it's gonna be a busy week when we have that November second event also, right? So, that's it.
That's November, uh, November.
November second.
Our show.
Mm-hmm. Okay, moving on to Legislative Liaison's Report.
Okay, just some quick takeaways from the MASCE Division Eight virtual meeting that they had on September twenty-sixth. For those of you who are going to the conference, Division Eight will meet on November seventh, that's Thursday, two-thirty to three forty-five, and they want everyone to attend. I'm sure you will.
Where is that?
They didn't have a, they didn't say where, but you will see it when you get your brochure, the final brochure. Some of these things are rehashing from forever. They talked, you know, they were talking about everything. The lottery that we all know, it didn't get resolved since Senator Cronin filed his bill. Now they're talking about a modified lottery, consideration of attendance and discipline. Nothing is really decided. Marv is planning to have several superintendents make public comments at their upcoming board meetings, some community members with public testimony, and of course, this is, goes without saying, they want everyone, every student who could benefit from a vocational education should have that opportunity, but they know there's, there are not enough seats. So they're looking, you know, everybody kind of threw out ideas. One was looking at the millionaire's tax generated 1.8 billion. They said they didn't spend it all. I thought they did, but, so we could use, they felt they could use a hundred million dollars for vocational education, targeted grant programs in addition to existing buildings, evening classes, off-site locations, and they ended with, we are victims of our own success. So that's what, you know, it's not like they resolved something. They're just talking about what we already know. This was a little different. They made a proposal to have cluster meetings. These would be in-person meetings at a host school, which showcased their school. It could be on a Saturday morning with a sharing of ideas.
They're already volunteering.
Yeah, that, I think, yeah, so if they do, we'll volunteer. Some of them said, you know, maybe you have to drive twenty-five minutes, but they thought that, that might be a nice idea. So we will, I was thinking the same thing.
We already put our...
We'll, we'll, yeah, we'll say we'll be a host. They're looking at a, having a contest to redesign a logo for vocational schools, celebrating fifty years. And again, if that comes through, I think we should definitely try to be part of that. A little on the MCAS, we just heard a lot about MCAS, and we're doing well here. So we all know it's question two on the ballot. And I guess the, it seems to be getting the most attention. It states elimination of MCAS as high school graduation requirement, so that's what you'll see on the ballot. So MASCE says, they, this is their statement. MASCE does not support the use of MCAS or any other high-stakes test as a requirement for a graduation diploma. They do support school districts setting the standards to determine the individual requirements for the receipt of a graduation diploma. They're a yes on question two. Now, the MTA also agrees with MASCE's position, and they are also a yes vote on question two. And according to the Globe, they are the major sponsor, I don't know if you know this, but they're the major sponsor of question two, and they've raised 3.2 million dollars in in-kind donations toward the campaign to pass it. So that's interesting. But the MAS, and I don't think you're in this, I don't know if you're agreeing with this, but the official position of the Executive Committee of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents voted to oppose question two. They take the position that the ballot question fails to stipulate a replacement for the MCAS exam as a graduation requirement, and there would be no statewide standard. They say vote no on question two. Governor Healy and the Secretary of Education Tuttweiler are also in opposition to question two. They support the idea of there being a state standard for graduation. So you have varying thoughts about what should happen. There's someone else that wants, there's someone else, but those are the main things. The question that bothers me, and we're trying to educate people, you know, we're, we know about this, but think about the average person that comes and tries to understand this or vote for it. I'm not sure that they have a sense of what it is, but we'll have to wait and see. And whatever happens, we really don't know. But I think everyone agrees, you know, and I don't think anyone wants to get rid of a test. You need a benchmark to see how you're doing, and also for other state reasons. So, I mean, I think all the groups do. They all want something. Some of them are just, don't want it to be tied to the graduation for various reasons. But I think, Holly, you said, you know, that very rarely happens that...
It rarely happens for us here. I can't, certainly cannot speak for the experience of students at other school districts, but we had Katie Tucci already sort of review our data, and we couldn't find any evidence of a student not graduating because of MCAS. And she kind of mentioned, like, a student who does not meet the competency determination, there are, like, they can retake the test, there are cohort appeals, so... What that means is if they're doing well in math and English, and they can show that the rest of the students, they're also performing equally well, and those students passed MCAS, then the school's local standard for who's doing well is legitimate, right? So there are multiple pathways. And I think as Katie said, there's a, for us as a school district, it's a valuable instrument.
I know, we just saw that.
You know, as a, as a graduation requirement, you know, kids can be very good students, doing very well, and have a bad day and fail MCAS. So it, do I think it should be the only thing that determines graduation? Probably not. But in terms of it being a really valuable tool for us to understand how we are doing big picture with our students, and certainly with, with special populations of students. And, you know, if you take the, the importance of it, what Katie was talking about, is the test taken as seriously? Do students take it as seriously? Do we get real data?
But that's my, you know, why take it? And that's what the student's gonna look at, looking at from that point, say, oh, yeah. Okay, I'm just gonna rock C all the way down, all the way down the rock. See you later.
And I, I mean, I think students, most students have, like, that self-driven sort of, I wanna do well on things.
Sure.
But, you know, I, you worry a little bit that maybe, maybe the data, the data stops having...
Excess.
But again, it's one of those things that folks need to be educated about and make the decision that, that is appropriate to them.
Well, thank you, Barbara. That was a great report. So now we're going into our subcommittees. Next up is policy subcommittee meeting and Chair Branch.
Oh, is that, is that, is that mine?
That's yours.
Okay, so I'm gonna be quick on both policy and the people and culture subcommittee. With respect to the people, legislation was introduced by my good friend Barbara around the term of office, the term of offices for the chair, the vice chair, treasurer, secretary, am I missing another role? I don't think so. Secretary, well, the organizational office holders, to increase it from two years to three years, we supported that unanimously. And the second piece of the conversation was around making sure that when we do reorganization, we do it at a time that we have all the election results and folks are ready to be seated. So we've moved that forward into December of each year. Am I, am I missing anything?
No, that's correct. And the other thing about December, too, is that we don't want, I think the way the policy is written, you could kind of fluctuate between December and November depending on whether there's election that year. We just wanna keep it consistent on the same month.
Oh, December, okay, yeah. So for, with respect to recommendations today, I would ask the entire school committee to approve what was already approved by the policy subcommittee. The recommended action is there. Jerson, you wanna read it?
Sure. I'm hoping to recommend the revisions to policies BDA and BDB, as recommended by the policy subcommittee members at the September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four meeting, to be in practice for the election in twenty-twenty-four, and to waive the second reading.
Okay, so that was a motion, not just a reading. You read it for the motion, so you're making a motion, correct? Okay, gotcha. And second.
Right, totally.
Yes, right. Any further, yep, any further discussion? If not, we'll bring it to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? What did you, what did you, where did you vote?
Oh!
Kelsey.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I, I...
Okay, so I have it, eight-zero. Thank you. It's all right.
I'm just trying to...
It's okay.
No, no.
All right, so now we're on BDB? Or do we, we did them combined. Sorry, excuse me. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you very much, everybody. Yes, yes.
So now we are on...
People and culture.
People and culture, when people and culture subcommittee met for the first time, I am, I'm just excited about this. I'm excited about the attendance. I'm also, on a personal note, very excited about your leadership in making sure that we move this forward. So Christine, we want to extend that to you wholeheartedly. So I did not bring my notes. We had a lengthy discussion, but I did wanna say a couple of things to remind the folks that are here and those that are listening over the airwaves. People and culture is really about us supporting as a school committee, no matter where you are from and no matter your role here at this great academic organization. So that's it in a nutshell. What we do wanna do, though, is that we wanna build an agenda. And what we decided to do was to get some data, and I know that that's in the works around where we are in terms of how our students are feeling about this great organization. I am so thankful that, Christine, I believe that you have this leadership within the students that you are going to work with us in terms of getting data for our next meeting, but that's where we are. Madam Chair, do I need to explain anything more than that?
No, I, I think that's it. So basically, it was a planning meeting to kind of figure out kind of what's up ahead, and so the first, well, the second meeting will be in two weeks, where it will be a full meeting.
Yeah, I think we also said we'll be meeting with groups of students.
Yes.
Yes, that, once we, once we reconcile some data.
Once we get the data.
That's right.
So it was a very good meeting. Again, I just wanna thank Christine, I wanna thank Holly. I mean, we're moving this stuff forward. One of the things that I love about the work that we're doing, not that we hadn't done it in the past, but I think that we are very, very upfront in terms of making sure that everyone that's here is emotionally supported, and I think that that's very important to our student population and our staff. So I wanna thank everyone.
Yeah.
That's it.
All right, thanks, Tony. Any questions for him? All right, if not, we have other reports. Do you wanna make a stand while we start the negotiations?
Oh, just, you know, we have every three years enter into negotiations with our teachers' federation, and that process has begun. Our teachers' federation contract expires August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five. So we are excited to get that process started. I wanna acknowledge Heather Stoddard, who is the president, or the chair of their grievances and negotiations committee of the federation, who attends almost every school committee meeting.
She does.
And so we are looking forward to that and looking forward to reaching an agreement with them quickly and one that's, that is fair and equitable to our amazing teachers. So, thank you very much.
All right, moving on, we'll start with report of the superintendent.
All right, so I, I will be brief. I do want to acknowledge Jared Lucier, who's here, vocational supervisor. Jared is also one of two candidates who is attending MAVA Leadership Two this year. And Leadership Two is really for those folks who want training and education around district-level leadership. So I'm pleased to have Jared here, and as most of you know, he was a plumbing teacher and then a vocational supervisor and a co-op guru and a wonderful member of our team. So thank you for being here tonight.
And you forgot plumber.
No, she said plumber. Well, she said plumbing instructor.
I'm a product of vocational education.
There you go, there you go.
All right, that's right. So just, you know, to kind of give you some insight into, you know, some, some things I'm working on for the next few, few weeks. So I've been invited by the MAVA General Membership Meeting to give a presentation on admissions to the membership, and to do that with LVO Perera, our CTE partner at Brockton. And we wanna talk about not only Southeastern's admissions processes, which we really believe are fair and equitable and transparent, but also to talk about the collaboration that we have with the city of Brockton, and how we are trying to be creative in, in expanding access to students, whether they're here on our campus or they're students at Brockton High School. I've also been invited along with Karen McGuire to present to the Board of Education virtually on November the eighteenth. She and I were, are the two vocational supervisors who are presenting on admissions policy to the Board of Education, and the following day, they're holding their meeting, at which they're going to make some decisions about vocational admissions. So once I have that link, I will share it out with you. They have asked us to ensure that at least one member of our school committee is there, just to, to show your support for vocational education, and, you know, it's no pressure on me at all.
What's that date again?
It's November the eighteenth, and I believe it's six, six. I, I will get you the date. Don't write down the time, because if it's wrong, you'll...
November eighteenth.
November the eighteenth, and it is a virtual meeting.
Oh, virtual.
How long is your presentation?
So Karen McGuire and I together get ten minutes.
Calls, you...
How can you do that? Wow.
And then there's a ten-minute question and answer after, so...
Oh, wow.
Yep, I'll be able to...
Not important.
Summary.
Summarize admission.
Okay.
All right.
So, yeah. We are having our strategic planning kickoff meeting this Friday, just the senior-level administrators. We're gonna lay out our schedule, and once I have all of that, I will share that with, with all of you so that you know where we are in that process. Staffing, Rob couldn't be here this evening because he wasn't feeling well, so, but I did wanna let you know, we did have one retirement of a long-term teacher for some personal reasons. But we are working already to fill that position. She did give us notice so that we can do that. We have filled the early college high school coordinator position, which was vacated by Noah Simon-Kawitz, who was here and took over as our assessment administrator. So that was a tough, tough position to fill when you had somebody as awesome as Noah in that position and trying to, to bring somebody else in. So we, we have filled that earlier today. In terms of enrollment, our unofficial October first number is sixteen eighteen in the high school. That is an increase of twenty-one students over last year. We also have eighty-one, eighty-one in district students in the TI for a total enrollment of sixteen ninety-nine, which is an increase of fifty-nine students. So that's what our October first enrollment number will be for Foundation Eighth next year. So that is not bad.
Wow.
That is not bad. And, oh, the other thing I want to mention, I hope that, Christina, I'm not stealing your thunder, but after our September twenty-fourth meeting, yes, I'm trying to get my dates right. We, we, one of our additional teachers, Janelle Canastra, invited the coordinating producer from Ted Lasso to come and speak to our students, and I can begin to tell you what inspirational person he was. He really delivered a message of hope, a message of persistence, motivation, hard work, and just, you know, knowing what... you know, knowing what you want to do and going after it with all your heart. And really just a very, very powerful experience for our students. So he spoke to our video performer, non-video, digital cinema and broadcasting students, as well as a few other students who had asked to come. So really powerful. So, you know, huge kudos to our vocational teachers who always use their networks and connections to, to help our students and to really inspire them. And it's just one example of that. So we're very, very... So I think that's...
Awesome. Any questions for Holly? We'll move on to the Acting Principals Report and Principal Corrini.
Well, we talked a lot about the high school tonight, so I'm very grateful. Yes. So we did have our school council meeting, which was great. It was really, I'd love to understand and hear. We had 10 students, 11 faculty members, and 10 parents. So just to really get a perspective on what people care about, what their priorities are, what they want to take a look at and work on. We agreed to sort of take one issue at a time and really just follow through the whole way rather than just, you know, talking about a whole bunch of things is, you know, what do we want to be successful at the end of the year and feel like we've accomplished. So, so that was great. We highlighted a lot of the academic side. Like Holly said, our vocational teachers have been really amazing about just, you know, having people come here or taking students out. So we did have the producer. We also had legal protective services, went to Boston MedFlight in Bedford. They had an amazing experience. You know, everything from working with the people that, you know, deal with the critically injured and, you know, looking at the helicopters and the jets, you know, from the mechanic point of view, just looking at all aspects of, of the industry from all of different points of view, looking at ambulance care, critical 911 dispatch. And so they just had a great experience. They did flight simulation, and they were very excited to be right next to Robert Kraft's hangar. So that's probably the highlight of the day. We have 164 students out of co-op, which is incredible for 165, because I have, not sign one on my desk.
She has one full.
He's like a few, 165. And we have 517 applicants, and we're working on Open House. As Katie said earlier today, we did have someone come today and observe our school. 15 teachers opened up their classrooms. And when she left, her sort of parting words were Southeastern was the most solid overall instruction that she has seen, you know, this school year. So that was a really nice compliment on, on how our teachers are doing. And the administrative team is just awesome as well. So I think we have just a lot to look forward to this year.
Thank you.
Actually, Christina, so mostly you know I have a daughter who's at the high school, and I'm, I hear a lot more on the ground than I ever have before because she's here. And I just, there's so many things that we can talk about, but today, I was just wondering if you could just talk very briefly about what's going on with performing arts this year and the decision that was made to kind of expand it so that more people could have access to that.
Yeah, that's just, you know, again, our teachers are just so amazing. And so we had, they have a play, and it was, they were able to have, like, 12 students be in the play. Well, 30 students tried out, and a lot of freshmen and a lot of different students that, that really never had even thought about it before. And so when we started talking about it, we had a meeting about it, and a few kids missed it, so they missed the announcements. And so when we sat down and talked about it, they expanded access. And they just, the teacher walked away, and a parent had called the same day and recommended, like, is there any way that they can, you know, the play is just a small amount, or any way they can take more students, or any way that they could have, you know, two. The teacher came back the next day, and I was just about to say, like, oh, you know, it's a parent recommendation. He goes, you know what? We looked at it last night, and we're going to expand access. We're going to add another day. We're going to do this. We're going to open it up to all 30 kids. Why are we turning students away? And that's just, it's just incredible. Like, I was like, what? I'm like, so I didn't even have to ask, or I didn't even have, it was such a good feeling to not even have to ask the teacher. Where he had already had a conversation with, you know, James the night before. Chris and James had already talked and said, why are we turning these kids away that really just want to be a part of our school and be a part of the community? And so that's, I think those are the things you don't see, you know, that happen here every day. People are always helping each other, always supporting each other. And now we have students doing the same thing, supporting each other and trying to, to help each other. So, you know, it's a really incredible group of teachers and faculty here.
Thanks so much. All right, moving on. TI Directors Report, Pat.
So as Mr. Plannin mentioned, we have 81 in district students, but 120 total students in the TI in the programs that are Chapter 74 programs, like cosmetology, dental assisting, and medical assisting, and very exciting, what is it, 67 nursing students. Very happy to have them, because it was a day and evening this year, so they perform in a full-time program. And then we have cosmetology, electrical, machine tool students, and HVAC students. There's 42 of them that are in their second semester or third, and they're wrapping up before Christmas or sometime in April. So we have new groups enrolling for January. Some of them are already into wait lists. So we're starting to see, this, for the first time, cosmetology had a wait list this September. So, so that's exciting to see. It's, you know, the program's slowly been building. And then the CTI programs, the CTI grads are running. So we have 11 welding students and 10 culinary art students, the food truck program. We're having our advisory board next Wednesday night, and the food truck group is doing the food for us for that. We made some changes this year with that round nine of a grant, and so we got them a toolkit, and we, which we hadn't done before for culinary, we got them a toolkit, we got them aprons, and we got them t-shirts, and they're just, they're really feeling it right there. They're feeling very professional. So we're looking forward to having them. And then the weld, the second welding cohort has been running for about a week. So, so that's another, altogether, another 21 students. So we're, we're full. We're doing well. And so the accreditation, you know, you know, I always have to talk about accreditation. So right now, the nursing program is headed into, they're in candidacy for ASN accreditation, which is the Accreditation Commission for Education in Nursing, required by the Board of Nursing to get their own program accreditation. And so we did the application last school year, and I think in, in the end of June, beginning of July, we had the candidacy. So we have a year now to prepare a candidacy presentation, and then we'll, we'll go from there. So we'll be working on that this year.
Great.
And what didn't make it in here is our cohort default rate is out this week, and zero again.
Wow.
Zero because of all the, you know, nobody was, nobody had to pay their loans while they were in school, you know, so, well, during the pandemic. So we're anticipating a bump once.
Okay. Not much of a default rate, though, right?
Well, I, you know, I think our default rate is steadily dropping. We've been into, like, I think, five. But it's been zero for the last couple of years.
Right, right.
But, you know, I can't really get excited about it. Because if we don't have zero, it's a problem. But we'll see what happens.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Hopefully not too bad. Hopefully all those people have been paying down their loans where it's been interest-free.
Hopefully. Well, they communicate that to you, though. Would they say, hey, Pat, I'm in trouble?
Well, we have an organization we partner with called ECMC that works with them. So they remind them, they watch it, they monitor for us.
Okay.
If it's, they report back to us, and so we can reach out to students.
Got you, got you.
So they do counseling before they leave. Christina Barrows, who's our Student Services President, does a lot of counseling with them. Try to encourage them not to take additional money they don't need.
But they take it.
Sometimes they need it. Sometimes they need it. And they're entitled to, to take it. But, you know, we try to manage that a little bit.
Any questions for Pat? Well, thank you. All right, in that case, I am going to declare an executive session, which according to Chapter 30A, Section 21, Paragraph A3, is necessary to discuss strategies in respect to negotiations and litigation, because an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and to not reconvene in open session to adjourn the meeting. So everybody can be dismissed except for school committee. Jen, you can stay. And thank you, everybody. We'll, we'll see you later. And we are going to take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Yes, bathroom break, please.